This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, this is a meeting of the planning board on August 24th, 2020. It is 6:04 PM. And we are meeting via video conference because the village hall is closed pursuant to Governor Cuomo's orders regarding the COVID-19 pandemic. Notice of this meeting is posted on the village website and a link to access for any resident to access this meeting is also provided on the village website. And the documents we're reviewing today is likewise posted on the village website. If anyone would like to see and discuss that. So with that said, I'll make a motion to open our meeting. Second, how do you vote?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, let the record show all five members of the planning board are present and all five voted in favor of opening the meeting. Okay. Trustees on, um, I have not heard any updates from them. Um, there's a little bit behind the scenes going on. Uh, they, uh, I emailed Matt Ingles, the consultant, and apparently Renee did as well. I talked to Bob on Wednesday and he had some dental surgery or something and seemed a little bit out of commission. So he hadn't had a chance to deal with that. Um, so I hadn't heard anything on Thursday or Friday. I sent Renee a couple of emails and since the trustees were involved talking to them, to Matt Ingles, I didn't really feel the need to participate a whole lot more in that discussion. But the response from Matt Ingles was that he was going to contact the people that worked on the grant, which is the Genesee Transportation Council, and ask if he can give us the documents that were paid for by taxpayers. What, um, I mean, I originally read that and I was contemplating a snarky response and I thought that would be very unprofessional. So I, I didn't do anything, but it, I mean, I don't understand taxpayers paid for him to develop the documents and it seems reasonable for him to hand them over. He may have done that, I don't know, but I haven't heard anything. So he was wanted to contact the Genesee Transportation Council and ask them for advice on it. I, I don't know. Justin, I think every such, um, request I've received, like it sounds like you're, you're familiar with it. I usually send stuff out within hours of receiving this kind of request.
Absolutely. Yeah, this is frustrating. We haven't gotten access to it yet. It really puts a disadvantage in modifying these things. And the same thing happened, I think, with the village code and comp plan too. I still don't know where those documents are. So this keeps repeating.
Absolutely. Um, so you know, the village section of this is not, is not long. And it wouldn't take, you know, someone who can type a long time just to type the text. And then we would have a separate, uh, village text. So I just kind of, you know, um, what is it? Page 75 through 90 something? You know, that's nothing. Um, just the text that's, and then people could, could work on it. And, and, um, include those, include those pages. So they're not in the supplement. They're, they're in the body of the text, but just, you know, just in a different format. You know, just, just to get it, just to get it done, just to get it done. But anyway, I don't know if that's, our place to, to ask for that.
I have a question about Adobe. So I don't know this answer. So this is a PDF format now. And if somebody has a high-end version of Adobe, could they create this document as a modifiable document? Or is it?
It's, it's a one-way process. You, um, Acrobat is, is kind of presentation only. So InDesign is, is where the sources are. And in addition, they, um, they mentioned that it was kind of a meta-document or a combination. So specifically what they're bringing in is probably some kinds of graphics in Adobe Illustrator. So vector graphics that have geometric shapes in it that you can edit, um, as well as GIS files they use in a couple of the maps. And we would need all the sources of those. Otherwise, you know, each one of the maps is going to take a few hours at least to.
Could you, could you take those pages of the document and is there a scannable service that will automatically do like scan to text?
We could do that. Yeah, there's some services. I'll convert a PDF to a Word document.
Yeah, we can get that text.
Or with the comp plan. And I think Susan, you worked on editing the comp plan. And it was like a 10-minute process with some free online service. And I'm sure there's a few options out there for it.
Getting the text out is not really the problem. And we can even get some lower resolution images that, you know, wouldn't be ideal, but it would, it would be workable. Um, but it would just, you know, there's, there's a loss involved. And if we actually want to be able to recreate something that looks professional.
Right. I mean, it makes no sense that we can't get it. So I would continue to go down that route.
All right. I mean, I can send him another email and just saying, hey, we'd really like to have all the documents, source documents needed to generate this, um, put, throw it on a flash drive and you can hand it off to Renee or whomever.
And it's possible though, that we might get some kickback where they don't give it to us. They'd have to give it to the board first.
Yeah, I don't care who they give it to. I mean.
I agree.
Give it to somebody.
Just give it for.
Yeah. I guess as, as far as modifying it though, without board action that says that we can modify this document, it feels like even if we do get the sources, we're, we're kind of at a, um, at an impasse here. I'm worried.
Well, what would be nice is if we did a joint discussion with the board and said, hey, here's all the updates that we think. Do you find any, um, concern with any of these? And if they say no, then we can do the work for them. You know, I think as far as the LWRP review, I mean, you basically could say, okay, we, we pass it with the following modifications that are currently embedded in this new document, right? And they just have to accept it in full.
Yeah.
Um, I guess that's one way to do it.
Yeah, we, we should be getting that on the calendar. I don't know if, uh, when Justin gets back, maybe you can comment on that. If he's heard about the trustees trying to coordinate anything with us, but I haven't heard anything on that.
Why should we actually, uh, we've done a lot of work for them. Um, what, what about, you know, the ATP committee like manning up?
Sure. Yes.
You know, we could pass it with conditions and the conditions is, you know, you fix it as, you know, look at our recommendations and, and.
To that end, Susan, so if you pass it with a condition, let's say you pass, let's say we pass it with a condition that they address, Justin, your conversation or your comments earlier about definitions. Susan, your comments and all of ours about, you know, trying to incorporate the LWRP in a meaningful way. And you've written some text to that that matters. Would we simply say we pass it conditional upon this text being embedded specifically? Or would it be more of an open-ended? I, I think it'd have to be very specific, right?
I don't know.
Well, let me share, I've thought a little bit about a conditional approval and I'm kind of rather reluctant to it. So we don't know what's going to happen after it goes away from us. And the observation is there's a strong penchant to do as little as possible. And I, I'm guessing the probable outcome is nothing will happen, um, or at least not soon. So if we conditionally approve it, that approval does not take effect until after all the conditions are met, which means, I think that means the trustees can't adopt it. So if they can't adopt it, legal, now whether they do it illegally is a whole other matter. But, um, whether, um, so if they adopt it and they meet our conditions, we might as well get a chance to see them before we vote. I don't know, but that's, we haven't had a response yet from the trustees. So we don't know what they want to do. So I, I've been maintaining all along, our first step is to just come up with our comments and, um, ask the trustees to respond. If we don't get a response, then we got to figure out what to do. Given the situation with Matt Ingles, um, I'm not expecting a response by, uh, any changes to be completed by mid-September, which I think is our deadline. So I don't know what we're going to do here, but, um.
That's a fair question on the 60-day. And again, this is my ignorance speaking. So we're addressing it. We're trying to talk about it. We have to put a vote in within 60 days, right?
Well, or we say it's incomplete, but they didn't respect that previously. I, I don't think that.
Right. So if we go back to them that with, with items that they can't overcome, whether or not it's because of labor or just the, the choice not to, it doesn't matter why. They could say, okay, the, the planning board has chosen to take this approach, the conditional approach. Eh, heck with it. We're just going to go vote with the town and get this thing ratified.
Yeah, I'm, I don't like dealing with the governing boards for this kind of reason is that kind of, they can kind of do their own thing and, um, ignore our recommendation sometimes as, uh, I mean, there's not much we can do about it. It's a little different than construction plans where you can't get a building permit until you're, you've gone through the boards. Go ahead.
So, you know, in regard to our last meeting, um, you know, Renee, Alisa, Bob, um, not, not one person defended the document. No, no one likes this document. Um, it's been shelved. It's, you know, has ignored the LWRP. So why, um, why, why don't we just look at the document in front of us? And, and ding it.
I'm okay with that.
That would, wouldn't that force their hand to, you know, to do something?
I think it would, and we can be soft-handed in that. We can just say with the current version before us, we find it incomplete. We hear our recommendations and we look forward to hearing from the trustees on, um, our recommendations. And we'll consider, you know, a revised document, um, when it's available. I mean, I think we could do a fairly soft thing like that, but still my leaning is let's first get our recommendations out there and deciding what to do with it. We still have not heard a formal response from the trustees. So I think it's fair to finish our documentation and findings first and give them an opportunity to respond.
So, so Justin, what, why, why do we need them to respond actually?
Um, we don't need to. And given the deadlines and their lack of respect for them previously, to extend them, that is. Um, I mean, my initial inclination would be to do what you, you kind of said, is maybe just say what's before us is inconsistent. And, um, say these are our recommendations. And I mean, I'd be okay with that. The more this moves on, the more I'm leaning that direction. But again, I like initially to at least get our recommendations out there. Um, so, but again, we, they've had a chance to look at them for a week. Um, I haven't heard anything more from anybody. Is there anyone else?
I've not heard anything. I just might suggest that given the history of having the LWRP review be assumed at the board level to the degree that we decide it's inconsistent, for us to get in there what we want, like the real key items that we want, which is effectively, Susan, your comments about the LWRP, Justin, some of your comments about definitions. And then all of, I mean, all of us agree with all these issues, but maybe some generalities that we could plug in there about the bridges, for example, or connectivity to the waterways, separate from just saying, go look at the LWRP or, um, or let's define what this entails or not. By not doing a conditional approval, do we lose leverage a little bit? Where we say, hey, look, we approved this. Just put these things in there. And they can be fairly succinct items that, that specifically say what we said before, which is this document isn't the LWRP. This document is beneath, you know, Renee didn't agree, but beneath the LWRP in terms of its power and influence and control. And so make sure you come back to it. Don't disregard it. And there's a lot of stuff in the LWRP that you have to pay attention to that isn't in, in the active transportation plan and go look at it. And if we're really aggressive in that and have the language buttoned up nicely, a conditional approval seems reasonable because they could still disregard it. They could still say, okay, fine. We didn't pass the planning board's LWRP review. We're just going to pass it on our own and move forward.
Well, they can always do that.
Correct. I, I don't disagree with that. But what I'm suggesting is by presenting a first step that gets into it, the key items of our findings, a conditional approval might get that done rather than them overcoming a denial outright. If I, so, so I guess my perspective would be if I'm going to deny it outright as inconsistent, I would prefer to do a conditional approval and then let them choose to deny it outright.
Um, I think it's kind of our decision, um, after whether to allow, I mean, we, we should keep things in front of us ideally. This is what Mindy always recommends. You can only look at what's before you and you can only act on what's things. Now, we have done conditional approvals in the past and it's always been the applicant. I'm trying to treat this generically like other applications. We want to treat all applications kind of in a similar mode. If we say, well, we have a concern with this and then we talk to the applicant and the applicant says, yeah, okay, let's, I'm agreeable to fixing that. And then we say, we just grant a conditional approval then and there and then say that, um, it's approved conditionally on this being, this issue being addressed as was agreed. We don't have that situation now. We don't. If we gave a conditional approval, my concern is I have no idea what's going to happen afterwards. But we may not, we may not have, whatever we do, we may not have much, um, I don't know what's going to happen afterwards. But, um, anyway, we can, go ahead.
No, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Uh, I was just going to say, I think we've been discussing this off and on at every meeting. And, you know, we're all reluctant to, um, get in the way of this thing. But we also need to move forward with our findings. So I was just going to say, we, we haven't reached an obvious conclusion. How about we just move forward with editing our document of findings for now? And we still have at least more, we still have more time to figure out what we're going to do with this. Um, and what I've heard is basically there's apprehension to blocking it. There's also apprehension to passing it. We're really hoping it gets fixed. Um, so we still eventually have to figure out what we're going to do, but not tonight.
My only comment is without understanding the approach that we're taking, um, the degree by which I might find fault or might address the findings, right? The severity of the issues. It may be my perspective to focus on just the key ones and to step back from some of the minor ones in order to try to reach a point where we could say it's a conditional approval on these key findings, not all the, all the rest. Right? So I may find issue with all the rest, but I may not necessarily find it, um, as important. Yeah.
Well, right now we're coming up with the recommendations. We're not saying thou shalt do this, but we're coming up with a recommendation. We're phrasing it as recommendations and where we go with it, uh, still leaves us forward flexibility.
Okay.
We're not saying you have to do this. We're recommending you do this. And we, I, I was always hoping we'll get a response from the trustees. They said they'll give us a response. They'll say we'll have a joint meeting. Maybe they'll, um, give up. Previously they gave us an official, um, extension of the time deadline. I don't know if they're willing to do that or not. Um, when reviewing the code, we tried to push off, we pushed off voting, uh, quite a while. And, um, that, you know, not much happened with it. And then the other thing I remember previously is we had a lengthy write-up about seeker findings for the environmental review. It was like 35 or 40 pages. I never got the impression anyone actually read those on the trustees. And we never heard a lick after that. So, um, I don't know. I mean, it's out of our control, but.
Right. Well, again, I just want to affect the, the final document that gets approved. And I'm trying to figure out in terms of how we move it forward, how do we maintain the most control and influence on that final document? And it's giving the trust, to me, it's giving the trustees something that's simple, concise and straightforward with key findings, like the, the highest quality findings that we almost write for them. And I find that to be a little discouraging, uh, but I think that's probably the case.
Okay. Well, shall we get back to editing these findings? And, um, Mr. Leek Gibb, you had online, do you want to be the presenter and note taker today?
Sure. Yeah, I can, I can take some notes. Um, let's see, what's the, where do we want to start with the, the document? Was it, uh, it was a Google Drive, the Google Drive document that I shared or?
Yeah, I think it was the Google document you shared. And we might as well just update that version is, is my thinking. And then we'll forward it around.
Yeah, let me just find that. So Planning Board LWRP considerations, eight, 17, 20, 20. Is that the, uh, with the, there's red on the third page, right?
Sounds correct.
Let me share it and we'll see.
I'm pulling up my version. I had it dated eight, 17.
Yeah. Okay.
And I think we only made it through like the first two pages. And I believe we were on policy 9.1.
Okay, things are flying around my screen here. So this is the document that I've got up here, 9.3, 92, 91. Does this look right? Can anybody see? I can also try to make it bigger if this is hard for anyone.
Yeah, I can't read any of the text in there. Um, I got a zoom on the side of my page.
Let me, let me try going to 125% or something. Is that better? Could also try 150.
I'm rearranging my screen here so that I can see the document and the pictures of everybody are much smaller. There was a button online to detach cameras.
Oh, you can slide up. Yeah, you can slide up the horizontal bar right above the document to the point where it's a lot bigger. Yeah, okay. I don't know if you guys can do that, but it works.
Yeah, this is, I do a lot more Google Hangouts than GoToMeeting, but yeah, I think I've got stuff set up here. Are we good?
I can read it.
Um. This, I think you got to go up much higher.
Okay. Um.
Keep going.
I thought we were at, uh, oh, 9.1 there. Okay, there's another 9.1. Okay, this is probably it, right?
No, I could, I would increase it myself. So.
You can?
Yep, I'm good.
So we all, everyone, yep.
That, that paragraph is in there twice. Right now it's under one and it's also, but it probably is because it apply, it, it's applicable there, but it's a 9.1. So it's also again, a nine. You know what I mean?
Down towards the end of the document, Joanne, or?
Yeah, it's after, well, the page starts with policy two and goes all the way down to 9.1, the one I have printed. So scroll down.
And here's this one again, right?
It is again.
Yeah. So let's just delete that first one.
Okay, so I'm going here and then, uh, delete this. Does that look right?
Yep.
Okay. Okay. And then at this point, are we skipping down to the second 9.1?
Well, let's see, that's through that policy two. That's not saying anything of significance there.
Why, why have it?
Do you want to delete the second sentence there on widening roads?
Um, where we have, where it says non-applicable, why, why include policy two?
Well, we were just deciding, just, um, our findings were going to be on the 12 or 13 policies. Well, I guess that's a question. What are we doing? Are we just going to send, are we going to make these? Usually we have at least some statement on each of the various policies that we're reviewing. So, uh, but we don't have to put those in the document we send to the trustees.
Right. These are recommendations and, and not the, you know, again, the, the policies don't match up with the checklist. So I think the checklist, you know, should be done separately, you know, and with several NAs. These are our recommendations that are based on policies in the LWRP. So if something, if this is a document of recommendations, uh, um, let's just keep, let's just keep that separate from the, from the checklist.
Right. So I think right now this is our only document containing findings though, isn't it, Justin? This is the, we've aggregated findings.
So here's my thought. Let's keep this aggregated together. And the version we send to the trustees, we'll just remove all these not applicable sections. Does that sound fair enough?
I, I think so. I, I agree with that too, Justin. I, I think we don't have another place where it shows that we've done a comprehensive review of all the considerations. I think it's good to keep a record of this. And then I can copy and paste it out into a separate document with all the things where you actually have comments. Because I agree with Susan, that would be better as well for, uh, the review. Does that sound okay? So we do both essentially. And this is the more comprehensive one. Just to show we do our work.
You can capitalize the N in that sentence if we're going to keep it. Fix the sentence.
So the document, Justin, that we started with, the eight, three document, that doesn't, that doesn't have every, every policy on it.
Yeah.
Right. So I guess I'm a, maybe I'm a document behind. Anyway, let's do, do what you guys think.
No, I, you're, you're right, Susan. There's another document that we presented, which is more of our recommendations. And this one is from the, the perspective of the LWRP policies.
So the other document was just comments. Uh, it had nothing to do with LWRP. It was just our general comments on the TP.
So I think what we would end up doing is maybe copying all of our comments from this LWRP document and then bring it back into the other document, which is just recommendations at the end.
Well, right. So this, the eight, three document is all LWRP.
The eight, three document, as you said?
Yeah.
Oh, boy. Okay.
That's policy one. It's section three. It's section, this is all LWRP.
Is that a Word document or is that something that we put in?
This came from Justin. Other.
I, okay.
He said it was dated eight, three?
Yep.
I don't have that.
Okay. I mean, I'm opening that up.
I'm looking.
Isn't that what we worked off last week?
Um, this one, I'm seeing the ATP recommendations from eight, three is talking about pages 75 to 93. And that was just our, that was our general comments unless I'm looking at the wrong document.
Uh.
Oh, I also had meeting notes dated eight, three, and that turned into this document.
Right. And that's all the LWRP.
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, it starts with LWRP policy 1.1. And then it goes to, uh, uh, 1.5 and then it goes to 9.1.
I'm just going to share, uh, the other document that, um, that I have as well here. One second.
Looking. I have that, but it's dated August 10th.
Yes, that's the one I have. And I'm, I'm pretty sure that was used to create this document. And it, this one does, the one we're having now does start at LWRP policy 1.1. And then it has recommendations. And then it has recommendations.
There's one other document that we've sent over, so we've sent the trustees two documents. We've sent this one and we've sent one where it's some of my recommendations and, and Justin Police Trust recommendations and we go page by page as to, you know, pretending it's basically an addition to the amendments. That's the other document that we sent over. So I would think that, you know, that's closer to the recommendations document. So if we do have a, you know, once we're done going through the LWRP considerations, we basically take these things and convert them into a format where we could say, change this on this page.
Well, so if this is going to create findings, why, why not go through the checklist? Because that's, that's where findings hook up.
Okay.
You're talking about LWRP findings, checklist or resolution?
Yeah, like there, aren't there?
Yeah, I kind of mentioned that.
I'm sure I have one and my thought is it would take just minutes to go from this and paste them into the, a resolution format.
So Susan, are you talking about the criteria in the law, the chapter 121? There's 15 of those.
Right, and that's what, that, that's the consistency review checklist.
Yeah, we talked about, we, we mentioned that briefly. I, I don't have any problems starting from that perspective or this one. I guess what I, what I heard Justin Police Trust say before is that we could just fill this in, fill the checklist in based on these findings, but I, I don't have any preference.
So all of these policies are from the big 185 LWRP document. And I think Susan, you mentioned this before, that our code has slightly different ones in there.
That's right. That's right. And so the, the LWRP policies don't match up with the, the checklist in the code. And the checklist in the code is, is what, you know, that's, that's our list, you know, to go down and, and this, to support our decisions from those, from that list, you refer to, to policies. It feels to me like we're doing it backwards, but.
Where are we looking at the code here? As far as the checklist, so we've got review of actions.
121-5, yes, you're in the right spot, you scroll down.
Yeah.
Go down more.
G.
G, got it, okay. Yep, 15, okay.
1 through 9 are the same.
Yeah.
Are the same. 9 was promote access to the canal.
Yeah, these are LWRP policies 1 through 13, so.
Except it's missing number 9.
Well, 10 is number 9.
No.
No, 8, 10, why did this, what's 9, why did they skip it?
I, I think, I don't know. Because 11.
Maybe they just forgot it.
It's, when you look at the policies, it's also policy 9.
Which one is?
Um, 10.
But it says 11.
I know.
Yeah, but that's in the, that's LWRP policy 9.
It is, right.
Policy 11 is promote sustainable use of living marine resources and coastal waters.
So this, so this criteria, number 10 combines those two.
Because it was so much easier to combine them and make us figure out what they skipped.
Okay, so basically 9 and 10 were combined into, or sorry, 9 and 11 were combined into 10.
Yes.
Number 10 here, okay.
They were having fun with us.
Uh, number 13 is number 14 and then there's what, 14 and 50, 15?
Can somebody tell me why number 12 is preserve historic resources of the LWRP area, LWRP policy 13? But when you look at the LWRP doc, it's policy two?
Right.
I feel like I've got to put them both on a spreadsheet side by side and figure out what they did with these. Actually make sure they hit them all, maybe.
Right, all right, well, I'm gonna go through, you guys do what you want. I'm gonna go through each policy in the big doc and measure them up against these 15 and see if there's anything missing. I think there's just extra stuff.
There's some extra stuff in the LWRP, the big document.
No, I think there's extra stuff on this list of 15.
Yeah, 13, 14 and 15 are from other, not from LWRP.
Right, like dredging. That's way in the back of the LWRP. But if, even if you look at, at number one in the, in what I'm calling the findings checklist, I mean, that's, that's a paragraph. And then with lots of things in it. And then you look at other points and it's a, it's a yes or, or no, or, or NA. So
Okay.
So I, I, Justin, what what document are we going to create our findings off?
Well, it sounds like we should be making our findings off of these 15 items. And I presume that's what you did before, is that correct?
That's what we did, yes.
I don't have my resolution template in front of me. But looking at this, the first eight are the same. And there is, most of the other ones that are different are not particularly relevant. We have what's in here as number 10, which combined the other two, that was our, a significant one. Number one was a significant one. But number 11, visual quality, we already said that's not a big deal. Historic resources is not a big deal. 12, Seeker, hasn't complied with Seeker yet. Number 14 is not relevant, that's the, that's the green print, that's on the town side. And 15, there's no dredging, so that's not relevant. So it sounds like the only things that we need to tweak are 10 through 15. And of that, only 10 is relevant, the rest of them are, we already said, aren't a big deal. So I, I think writing up findings on these 15 is pretty straightforward thing. And either we can modify this document to match these 15 or we can do that offline. I think it might be better to do offline because I think it'll be a pretty trivial task.
I think you're right. I mean, I just went.
Turbulent difficulty, not necessarily turbulent time.
The entirety of the LWRP is contained inside those 15 and there's a few extra. And I think the few extra are 14 and 15. And 13, 13 is reworded. Uh, it's actually policy 13, but it's been reworded and it doesn't. Yeah, so they're not, inside of this code, they're not labeling the LWRP policies correctly, obviously. So I think, Susan, just to your comment, if we go through the LWRP document, which has a lot more depth of what each policy means and modify this Word doc, I think to Justin, Lish's point, we can just dump it into the findings pretty easy.
Okay.
Do we have to do, does, let's see, number 13 obligate that we do a seeker on this as well, even if it wasn't, even if we don't, are specifically asked to do that?
We're an involved agency and there may be some differences from the governing boards, but when they decide to start the seeker process, we'll get a notice and be asked for comment. And we would normally say, the notice would say, we're interested in being lead agency. Do you disagree with, if you intend to be lead agency, please, you know, let us know or something like that. And our normal response is, no, we don't want to be lead agency. And we would send some additional comments. And as I mentioned earlier tonight, the comments we sent to the trustees previously, we spent a lot of, quite a bit of time working on those and they didn't do much with them. But we did get a lot, we also had our big matrix of issues that we had identified that they did look at and that included a lot of the seeker concerns. So, but anyway.
Makes sense.
So for David, I don't know how much training you, or you've had on seeker. But it's supposed to be a coordinated review. And the first step is to decide who is in charge of the coordinated review. And it's supposed to be the agency that has the most control over what's going on. So if multiple agencies are involved, which agency has the greatest ability to change the action to address environmental issues? So in this case, there's no question that it would be the Board of Trustees and the Town Board because they're adopting the document, they're gonna change it. So it would not be appropriate for us to say, we want to be the lead agency for the environmental review. And so, but a lot of times when other agencies get these notices, it's a race to do as little as possible. There's, I think a general perspective of, on a lot of communities is that these environmental reviews are just a nuisance. And I, I think a lot of them, agencies just don't want to do anything at all regarding them if they don't have to. So if they get a lead agency request, a lot of places will say, nope, I've had it. And then not send along any comments. I've always thought it makes sense to take you seriously and send along comments that makes sense. So that's my perspective. Anyway. Sorry, I got distracted on seeker. Does anyone else have any questions on seeker? So we haven't received a notice yet. And once they send out a notice, they can't do anything to adopt it for 30 days. All right. Um, so where are we? It sounded, I, I thought it would be easiest if we go through these, this document kind of in the format it's written and revise it as needed. And per Susan's comment, we're gonna have to turn this into a findings document at some point and we can do that offline and put it in a resolution format.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Just as a reminder too, I mean, this has been submitted to the trustees, so maybe someone has read it and they're already thinking about how to accommodate some of these.
So no. Um, the mayor already said that of our original recommendations, he scanned through them and he was generally in agreement with most all of them. But I think the real wall that we're fighting against is not necessarily willingness to do it, but ability to address it and getting the resources to do it. And we'll see.
So where?
Were we on policy two? The discussion we had was whether to leave these in here. And I think the thought is, let's leave these in here for now when we make our, and we'll split this into two documents later, our findings resolution and our recommendations to the trustees. Everyone okay with that?
Yes.
So the first thing is policy three. So that's 3.1 there. I, I think, I would just suggest adding a second, a sentence after that. So I'll turn the question mark into a period and just say, ensure that any road improvements and lighting installed in the LWRP area. Do not, I guess, do not introduce.
Do not introduce what?
Uh, I should back up a little bit, just say maybe are dark sky compliant? And consistent with village.
Something like that?
Yeah, well, the only thing we usually look at is dark sky compliant. We look at illumination level sometimes. And the other big thing is there aren't, aren't that ghastly blue color.
Right, blue hue LEDs, cold LEDs.
Yeah, so we usually say the color is between 2700 Kelvin and 3000 Kelvin.
I have a question on this. The ATP itself is not a document that by us passing LWRP automatically provides them the opportunity to put lighting up throughout the village. So any lighting that has to go up relative to the ATP doesn't have to come before us anyway?
Um, I'm thinking this is more of a thing to, for them to use to argue with the DOT. If the DOT wants to put up lighting, I think we tell them, okay, you can put up lighting, but the planning board already found that it needs to be dark sky compliant, be an appropriate color and so on.
Wouldn't that be default just based on our code already, like the ATP, that independent of the ATP, wouldn't the DOT have to get approval for that?
Nope, they're exempt from our code.
Yes. Okay, so yeah, we might want to put something in the ATP for that.
So the lighting we've talked about are the RFBs and the bridge lighting so far is, is what I've seen in the, in the ATP. And there might be other trail lighting things as well, but.
Instead of getting specific, could we just simply say that all improvements relative to the ATP must conform with existing code for village lighting requirements?
Yeah, I think.
That would be better and then we don't have to define it here. We just simply say it has to adhere to all existing code requirements.
Can we say dark sky compliant and otherwise consistent with village code?
Sure, you, you can go double. I mean, that's, that's a little.
If, if they're not gonna read the village code, what's the one thing that we want to have stand out? It sounds like it might be.
They're dark sky compliant and color of 2700 Kelvin to 3000 Kelvin, because that's not in village code.
Is that in village code already, those?
2700.
Okay. Yep.
And 30?
3000K.
And now here's, quick comment though, here's, here's a, just a thought. If you define it there and village code changes, why wouldn't we just have that say adhere to village code? So put the dark sky compliant and then say adhere to village code.
Well, what we've done in the past is we've used recommendations from other agencies. Our code is behind the scientific findings. The American Medical Association came out with findings a few years ago, saying that these bluish white sources are harmful to animal life, harmful for night vision, harmful to human health. So what we've said is the American Metals, Medical Association says it's harmful to human health and so on if it's these bluish colors. So we ask people, don't make it those blue colors, let's instead make it these standard colors. These standard colors of 2700 and 3000 Kelvin, that's your standard fluorescent, I meant your fluorescent, your standard incandescent soft white light bulbs that we've used for decades. They're readily available in any, in, in commercial LED lights, it's not hard to comply with this. But one of the problems is the bluish ones are slightly more efficient in light, so they use a little bit less electricity. So someone said, well, I want to save a buck, I'm gonna put these ghastly colored ones out there. Or someone just doesn't think and doesn't, because we're used to just buying a light bulb and not looking at it's, the color so much of it. Um, or someone just doesn't think and doesn't, because we're used to just buying a light bulb and not looking at it's the color so much of it.
So your, your comments, I, I respect your comments. So you're essentially saying village code doesn't go far enough. We're going to go a little farther with our recommendations here. I still think it'd be nice if you plug in the village code comment and also plug in the 27 to 3,000, right? Just to simply. So dark sky compliant, that's my thought. Um, because if they, if the village board rejects the 27, 3,000, you still want them to have a fallback to say at a minimum, it's the code. And maybe someday they update the code.
Yeah, well, and also the LWRP goes beyond code. LWRP says they have to be dark sky compliant. Our lighting code was adopted before the LWRP. So it's like five, they're like five years apart.
So then.
Is anybody else losing audio here?
So then instead of any of this, do we just have, simply have to say refer to the LWRP? And the more often the ATP says go to the LWRP, the better.
Let's see if I, I forgot to pull it up.
Sorry, can you hear me okay now?
Yeah.
I was losing audio. I wonder if there's like a memory leak in their screen sharing algorithm or something because it kept getting slower and slower and I lost audio for a second.
Um, I think this was a good enough summary.
Okay. Alright.
Um, except the, the beginning of that sentence, ensure that any, um, road improvements. You can just say maybe any lighting improvements or lighting installed. Okay, I'm okay with that. Does everyone else?
I'm fine with it. Yep.
Yep, sounds good. Okay.
Policy four, we found that applicable.
Can I make this, I'm going.
Yeah, you're doing good.
That's the way it is. It is. Same way. Is that alright?
Um, it looks like we didn't have any firm recommendations on what to do with policy five. Right. I think a lot of the things inside there are basically duplicates of other sections.
Yeah, I, I think that's fine. And the LWRP itself, I think we're more concerned about connectivity. Than we are improving. So yeah, I think those are good comments and just leave it alone. If they do nothing, it's not the end of the world.
Yeah. So I think the one thing in here we're kind of wondering about is what do we do about, um, um, drainage resulting from the pavement expansion? Um, my guess is it's pretty minimal. We're not, they're going to put in a few sidewalks and I don't think sidewalks are going to make or break anything.
Yeah.
Sorry, I just have to, I just realized I have two copies of different versions of go to meeting running. And they're both taking a hundred percent CPU. I have to fix this.
You were so excited to come on tonight. You opened up too.
I must've had one running from like three weeks ago. It left open. Alright, I think I killed it. Sorry about that. Okay. That might fix my audio. Alright, sorry, where are we?
So, so my first is those first two bullets don't say anything. Maybe just delete those.
Okay, so it'd be these two. Try getting rid of those. Why is this red?
I have no idea.
The font's different.
And the font's different. Okay, let's try to take care of that too. Clear formatting. And weird, uh, quotation marks too. They're still weird.
Is previous pavement a lot more expensive than standard? Or is it lesser?
Um. I don't, it is more expensive. How much more? I don't know. I once heard 5X more, but I think it's come down.
Wow.
Um, but I think the bigger concern is maintenance. My understanding is the pavement itself might be slightly more expensive. The bigger problem is you need a, a deeper gravel bed underneath it. Um, so I think I've heard it said you need like 18 inches of gravel underneath it. I had notes on this somewhere. I don't know what is normally underneath a sidewalk. Uh, but not that much. And normally underneath a, um, parking lot would again not be that much. I'm guessing more like six inches might be more typical.
Well, they've also, uh, we, we, when we talked about this before, there are issues with the soil compaction and stuff, right? If it's not the right kind of soil, then it's not going to matter if you've got permeable pavement. And if there's already a, a layer of pavement underneath it, it won't matter. Um, so the conditions have to be right to be used.
Got it.
Alright, is that, we, we talked about that with Chase and some other.
Um, yeah, so, so maybe we should just put a note in there of consider, um. Uh, then say, uh, making these pervious pavement.
I was fine how it was written. I just was.
It was kind of a question. Um, I, I think instead maybe we could just make a statement that they should consider it. Or use where possible, use where. Um, use where it makes sense.
Pavement where, where it makes sense. That makes sense.
Well, you could just simply say preferred when possible, and then that would give a, a flexibility for either financial restrictions or, um, groundwater removal restrictions.
Uh huh. Um, one practical.
One practical.
Uh, permeable or pervious? Perme, I kind of prefer permeable, but I don't know.
I think they mean the same thing.
Yeah.
Yeah, pervious is how I'm looking it up right now online.
I've always heard it called pervious pavement, but they're the same thing.
Permeable pavement. Looks the same, yeah.
Um, so one of the big advantages of, uh, the pervious pavement is then, um, water goes through it. It doesn't make puddles. So you don't get ice puddles all over it in the winter. So that's actually a big advantage.
This is, can anybody say something?
Hey, Justin, put either prefer pervious or permeable. So permeable pavers, I'm reading this online right now. Permeable pavers are different from pervious pavers in that rainwater passes around the paver as opposed to through it. Oh. So I don't really care which happens.
This is a good tongue twister too.
Yeah, so permeable or.
Prefer pervious or permeable pavement? Practical. That's great.
Yeah.
Yeah. They're going to have to look those up.
Can, can the first bullet point, which is a quote from the LWRP not be a bullet point?
Mm-hmm.
Because the other ones are all recommendations or, okay, thanks.
That's good.
Yep, thank you.
Should we quote the LWRP in terms of page number there or no?
It would be nice. Um.
Section three, page 15.
Thanks. Does that look okay?
Yep, make that LWRP section three. Thank you, Susan.
Yep.
Thanks. Okay, um, are we down to six?
Um, the bullet point of forwarding it just got harder.
Hmm. I. Uh, how, how about we, um, could we just make this recommendation instead of several questions? Um.
Right.
Uh, consider whether sidewalk expansion will impact stormwater.
I'll be right back down. I'm going to step away for just one minute.
Something like that. And delete this.
Or how about can, consult engineer?
Okay.
As to, um. Whether, yeah, to determine, yeah.
Yeah, and, and it's actually, um, these two are combined too. They could be, we can leave them separate. I don't know if it really matters too much.
So in the last bullet, then the recommendation would be to, um. Um, would be to not use audible crosswalk signs.
Are they going to get into, is this an ADA concern where we don't really have any say?
I don't see those things in very many places, so I really don't know.
I have no idea. I've in.
There's one at Sutherland and Jeff Road.
That's right. I, I just don't know if we have any say here. I've seen them a lot in New York City, but.
Yeah, what's wrong with it?
Um, I think, well, they tend to be, I think they could be done in a way that's more, um. Tasteful and done in a way that's very annoying. And I've always seen them done in ways that are very annoying. You can hear them from blocks away. And, um, they're very low quality, cheap speakers that just are just an irritating shrill sound. This is kind of my thought, uh, my take on it, but. Um, I, so I don't know what options there are in implementing them, but doing the cheapest one may not be the best.
I don't have any experience to.
The one at Sutherland is fine, and I'm not sure, uh. Maybe just say, um, uh, audio crosswalks, crosswalk signs should be. Um, you, you know, as, as, uh, recommended or as. Who would, who would weigh in on that as?
As unobtrusive as possible or something to that effect?
But they, they do want to be obtrusive, right? I mean, that's the.
They need to be seen and heard.
Yeah, and we've got such a, a strong deaf community here as well. I think it's. Not that it's.
I, I don't mind them.
I guess this would be a, a vision issue instead, but yeah, I don't know. I don't know what to say here.
Do, um, crosswalks that make noises, make it safer for pedestrians or just let them know when it's okay to go?
Well, they announce the name of the street often. And they go beep, beep, beep. So you know where the street is. So if you're blind, I think both knowing which street you're crossing and where you're at would be extremely helpful where it starts.
I think if you just leave that bullet point alone, we'll let them do it as they may.
Okay, that's fine with me.
Do we want to be stronger with it? I mean, I don't know.
I don't, I'm not.
I wouldn't say anything here. What's that?
What, what do we want to, what's, what's the beef?
Well, the beef is if you, if they're audible to basically do it in a sensitive way that's, um, not going to. Cross over from functional to being a nuisance.
I, I think they're, they're supposed to be heard though. I, I don't think that we can really, um. I don't, I, I just did a quick Google on high quality, um, audible beakening, I guess it would be. Uh, and I didn't find any links on it. I think if that. If there were something that we knew about, um, then I would recommend it, but otherwise I don't, I, I can't really go against recommendations that the DOT would provide here.
Right.
So I wouldn't say anything. I, I don't want to say, don't put them there because it sounds like it, it might be something important for, for people with disabilities.
Do we want to, oh, go ahead, Susan, sorry.
Uh, I'm, I'm familiar with the one across from the, um, uh, Judge Arx courthouse. Uh, whatever that main street is, there's one there. And then I just used one this morning at the corner of Jeff Road and Sutherland. And I think they have to be, you know, loud enough to, uh, perform their function.
Do they, I, I'll have to go check these out. Do they beep?
No, it's a voice.
Yeah, the ones I hear go, basically they sound kind of like a bird chirping, but, but very shrill effect. And then it says the name of the street.
Where's that? And what, how does it function?
Um, I, a ton of them, when I've been down in Philadelphia, they have them on every street corner. And when I walk out of a hotel, that's like, all I hear is these signs. There are so many, there, I mean, the blocks are short and there's lots of them. I just spent a lot of time downtown and, sorry, not Philadelphia, Pittsburgh. Um, and they also have been, they mostly have them in larger cities. Uh, I have seen some in downtown Rochester, I'm thinking over by dinosaur barbecue, I think. Um, I've seen one over there. Um, I'll have to check out the one on Sutherland Street because I don't normally walk over there. So, um, that's the other end of the village for me.
So this is one of those instances where in looking at the ATP, I'm thankful that they say. Uh, it may be appropriate to include, and they mentioned audible pedestrian signals, right? Um, and then they reference it in the. The, the word audible is only. Twice in the entire document. I, I, I don't think we need to focus too much on it. It's on page 61. It's outside the village section anyway. And the only other way this place they mentioned audible is on page 63. I don't think in the village section they include. Any reference to it.
So I guess the meat of my thought of it, and it sounds like others may disagree, but the meat of my thought is if you're going to put in audible ones, do it as tastefully as possible.
I agree.
And as, as, so, that's all I'm trying to get to. However you want to word that, it's fine with me.
This is, this is one of those, you know, when they had all the crosswalks, get the big bright signs get put up and the signs in the middle of the road. Might it have been appropriate if those signs were only on two out of every three? Yeah, possible. If we go to an audible crosswalk system, would I want an audible crosswalk on every crosswalk? It's not necessary for me, but I don't think the ATP is, or I don't, I don't think the LWRP is all that, um. Can, it's not trying to dictate that. So I, I don't know, maybe just say, in this mention, say, um, tastefully done. Audible squawking crosswalks as appropriate or something. I don't know. I don't want every cross, crosswalk to have an audible thing though.
What if we said something like follow best practices for integration with accessible, uh, pedestrian signals to the environment? Something like that.
What if we say nothing?
Or nothing?
Really, it's, it's just one of those things. I think it's kind of like the color of light bulbs. You want to make sure someone thinks about it and makes a good choice. If not, they'll just say, oh, I gotta do, buy this thing to comply with it. Um, and, um, you know, uh, I guess there's, I'm kind of thinking of the, um. Uh, the joke when I go to the paint store is if they buy paints, they ask me if this color was certified by my spouse. It's like one of those things, you got to make sure you're thinking about the decision you're making. As long as there's some thought going in there, hopefully it comes to a reasonable outcome.
I, this, this is what I came up with here. I don't know if this is.
I'm good with that.
Okay, Justin, would that be okay with you, this? This statement?
Uh, I'm okay with that.
Okay, and I would get rid of that one if that's acceptable.
Very good.
Yeah. Yeah, I think we move on now. Personally.
Six, not applicable.
Yeah, I'm good with six, seven and eight as they're written. I just go down to nine where the beef, the bigger beef is.
That's right.
Uh huh.
Um, so under 9.1, we, it, it talks about appropriate physical public access to the canal. I mean, and that was really one of our, one of my big concerns is the, um, access to the canal area was an afterthought, not really well addressed. The bicycle system. The bicycle system, um, I thought it was, a lot of the bicycle lanes, particularly on the major roads, I, I think they're too narrow. I don't think they're usable by the, um, uh, all users. So I think this is a big debate when constructing things like bicycle lanes and sidewalks, who is the intended user? And, um, what is our design criteria? And a lot of the bicycle lanes, get designed for the so-called fearless riders. And as we've discussed before, Dave, you wouldn't ride with your, um, eight-year-old or nine-year-old kid on a lot of these bike lanes. That's kind of a problem. So my thought with this is the recommendation is to ensure that, uh, bike lanes constructed are suitable for all users.
I agree.
And safe. Um, and the other thing I, I think is widening sidewalks is something I think makes sense. Let me get another beverage. I'll be right back.
So again, this is that appropriate physical public access. That's a quote from the LWRP.
Oh, is it? Okay. Yeah. And somehow we lost, it said weird line breaks, um, that I just tried to fix.
And, and that's from, uh, section three, page twenty-seven.
And I imagine, uh, page twenty-seven, I imagine there's a period here too, isn't it?
Yeah, say LWRP section three, just so you, I try to do that consistently so we know whether we're quoting the ATP or the LWRP.
Hey, Justin, if you're gonna quote it, take the period out.
Really?
Yeah, they didn't put a period in the LWRP.
Gee, that's right.
We wanna be true to our quotes.
I won't tease.
Do it, do it.
So, um, the, um, I, I, this is, I think, kind of a big factor when working with the DOT, is who is the end user and who is it being designed for? So that's why I think making a recommendation, um, that, to, uh, increase the width of bicycle lanes and particularly on major roads, and design the bicycle lanes to work for all users.
I think to that point, under nine point one, we should put a recommendation. And we should insert verbiage here. And I don't care how we worded, but, to the point of, of, of letting the applicant know what it would need for us to feel that it is consistent with this policy, we should tell them.
Okay. So I'll start with maybe a recommendation.
Um, do we wanna say recommendation here?
Yep.
I think so. But doesn't that make sense? It's like.
Sure.
Yeah, absolutely.
Uh, so we were talking about increasing the width of bicycle lanes to ensure that bicyclists of all skill levels are able to, productively use them or safely use them.
Yeah. Exactly.
Right. And somewhere I'd like to, uh, mention that, you know, the, the, one of the major bicycle, uh, bicycle and pedestrian, you know, dynamics that, uh, is getting to the canal. And I think, I think that has never been, uh, addressed in the ATP.
Yeah, so just say this is particularly important, um, in areas near the canal so that it can be accessed.
Yeah, since, since this is, since this is a, you know, primary destination in the village, is getting to the canal path. Um, you know, it's, every access to it should be as safe as possible for pedestrians, and all, uh, um, bicycle skill levels.
What if we, whatever we put here, what if we end the sentence with something to the effect of, uh, the ATP knowingly or intentionally even, does not address connectivity to the canal, that please defer to the LWRP. Right? And, and it's this idea that if you're, no matter what we say here, so, so my, my concern would be is we try to get too specific and not cute, but too specific with our wording here. And in some way it allows us or allows somebody to not go in the LWRP and look through what they need to do. I, I think every opportunity we have for the board to pick up and put down a comment, go to the LWRP, the better. And, and because I think the ATP fails in this regard, they're not gonna rewrite it to have it be, connected, right? They're just not gonna rewrite it to connect it. So maybe we make some just broader statements about the, the bridges or connections like we do here, but I think we should end it with, and go to the LWRP and look at the policy itself.
Yeah, we'll, we'll quote that, some of the things here. Um, I'm thinking about your comment earlier of putting in some, um, more specific things because, uh, I, I think there's a lot of misinterpretation of practices to know what's actually best practice. When someone says the minimum bike path shall be, say, five feet wide, that doesn't mean you should put a five-foot-wide bike path everywhere. I'm not gonna ride on a five-foot-wide bike path on five ninety, you know, not gonna happen. So, um, they, um, and I've noticed all of these standards are very wishy-washy. If we take a look at, you know, our zoning code, it's crystal clear as to how wide, what the minimum size of your lot needs to be and how far your house needs to be from the lot line. Um, I don't know, this, I, I just think the, the standards are so intentionally so vague that no one actually knows what to do. And they, that they end up being driven more by financial considerations, and ease of construction than by what's actually functional.
Okay, so then to that point, in addition to a reference of LWRP, should we note and adhere to, XYZ standards?
Well, here's my, here's my suggestion we put in there. Um, it says, um, due to high traffic on the, major roads in proximity of the canal, we recommend six to eight-foot-wide buffered bicycle lanes. That was something we were talking about, but that's my thought.
Especially for high-traffic roads.
Okay.
Is that even possible? Six to eight feet? Or are you talking, are you including the sidewalk?
Yep, depending on, you know, that would depend on the, on the observed vehicle speed. Oh, I'd say buffered bicycle lanes so that they actually have something separating them from traffic. There you go.
Depending on traffic speed.
Yes, let me take that and run with it. So you're on a bridge. Can we put in a six to eight-foot-wide buffered bike lane with a sidewalk and still have two lanes of traffic?
They can put a wider sidewalk on there. I don't think they could have a six-foot or eight-foot-wide bike lane and an eight-foot-wide sidewalk. So I think that then it comes down to a choice. What do they do? Get rid, make a wider sidewalk or make a tiny bike lane?
I, I agree with you. So I just wanna make sure in our statements here, we're not, too restrictive. I know it's a, it should be a plan, it should be something we can act on, but there's some instances where that wouldn't be active, actionable. And, um, so that, I guess.
Well. Do you wanna say something like, uh, where possible here?
Yep. Well, I think it's not what we're saying because where possible means don't do it at all.
Uh, yeah, I think we just wanna do it, right? We, we just wanna force their hand. And that's where I'm saying, uh, be careful with being too descriptive. Um, on the sixty-eight feet, I mean, maybe we.
But you could say, or a dedicated mixed-use path.
Sure. Yeah, good, good, good. Right? Designed to, is there, is there a general we understood to be, active transportation, like codified national, standard for bike paths and roadways that we could insert here?
Uh, yeah, those actual standards. Um, I think that calls for a ten-foot-wide mixed-use path minimum.
Well, we, we could put, you know, and as possible adhere to XYZ standards.
They say where physically possible.
Sure.
Where physically to start, start out that way?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, again, I think that just makes this whole thing optional if you say that. I mean, they, uh, someone can obviously disregard it and say it's not possible to do it here, but.
I guess to your point, Justin, I would rather have somebody come in and say, uh, you're not adhering to code or you're not adhering to the ATP and try to force their hand, right?
If they physically can't do it, they'll find a workaround. Um, I, my just concern is they'll, they'll, um, we'd want the, there to be a difference between them being unwilling to do it versus unable to do it.
Right? Do we wanna put some comment here, maybe after, before the referred LWRP policies, uh, something to the extent of, um, you know, with regards to, um, canal access, uh, the bridges are of particular importance. Um, and any reconstruction improvements or et cetera should be mindful. I mean, just something that highlights the bridge issue.
Yeah, well, I think also, I think it makes sense to talk about the bridges and.
Do you wanna, uh, sorry, do you wanna end this way? LWRP policies, national guidelines or?
Yeah, I would. Go, go to the floor refer.
Uh huh.
And insert something about the bridges.
Okay, um.
So with.
Access to the canal via, you know, the, the bridges in the village, I don't know.
Bridges, um.
How about this? Uh, access to the canal is predominantly, uh, available through, or predominantly, canal access is predominantly, uh, by way of the bridges. Uh, particular attention should be paid, um, to ensure, accessibility, uh, for all modes of transportation or, or something, right? Um, so access to the canal is primary is, uh, so.
Special attention.
That's good. Yeah.
Something like that.
Ensure pedestrians, bicyclists.
To ensure, um, for bicy, uh, and bicyclists or just bicyclists?
Both.
Yep, um, so. One of the other things that we're talking about is wider sidewalks. And, um, I think it's the, um, Federal Highway Administration recommends eight-foot-wide sidewalks in high-traffic areas. So, I mean, the ideal thing would be, I'd really like to see eight-foot-wide sidewalks at least on all the bridges.
Um, okay.
National guidelines right now?
That's the different guidelines. I haven't read through them. There are separate ones for sidewalks and pedestrians and they, and bicyclists. I haven't read enough bicycle code or pedestrian code yet.
All major roads.
I don't know.
Uh, uh, yeah, Village Bridges is fine. I mean, that's essentially saying that rather than a dedicated bike path, you're willing to go, to a dedicated, uh, multi-use path. Or sidewalk. I mean, I don't know if that's what we want. I, to.
So you want the spandex guys Saturday morning? And strollers on the same sidewalk?
No, you don't. You're right. You want a dedicated path plus a big wide sidewalk, sidewalk, so.
Yeah.
So to that end, I mean, what would I rather have? An eight-foot-wide sidewalk plus a dedicated bike path?
Well, I kinda think that if you end up getting an eight-foot-wide sidewalk and a three-foot bike path, the fearless riders will still do the, um, three-foot bike path and everybody else will just take their bikes on the sidewalk.
Yeah, I think so too.
And I don't think that's horrible.
You probably wouldn't get a buffered three-foot walk, but yeah, it's fine. I don't think you need it. Honestly, I don't think the spandex bikers want a buffered bike path.
Yeah, I think they may just be happy in traffic.
Yeah, they would just stay on the road.
Okay, so recommendation, change this, sorry.
Yeah, well, so it sounds like on bridges, the eight-foot-wide sidewalk is a bigger concern than the bike lanes. I think there's.
I'm not an expert on transportation across tight, narrow bridges, but I think if it were me with my family, going across the bridge, I would rather have, a narrow bike line for the spandex guys and be on the sidewalk for, a reasonable period of time. Not that I don't go on the road with the kids some, and I guess if it was buffered, I would be fine with that. But I can't imagine we would do a buffered, bike path on the bridges. I, I just don't see that coming.
Okay, so we put this eight-foot-wide sidewalk up, uh, I don't know, and then get rid of the buffered bike lane thing?
So maybe the bridge. No, because I think you want that on, say, Route sixty-five, for example, or on North Main Street. Um, if you're getting there and you're just on the road and there's room to put wider one in there, put one. So, but I think direct, the problem is bridges are only so wide and it's not practical to widen them. So I think, so the preference on bridges would be for eight-foot-wide sidewalks and then whatever physically, uh, constructable bike path, um, would make sense. And depending on the bridge, there's North Main Street where people might feel comfortable riding in traffic. And then there's Monroe Avenue Bridge. I don't see anyone wanting to ride right in the middle of the lane on the Monroe Ave Bridge personally because, some people might not be able to see it going over the hump. I don't know.
North Main, it's harder for vision than, than Monroe.
And it's long.
Yeah. Yeah, you know what? So we're writing this recommendation up, you know, and in my head, I'm hearing Renee, saying something to the effect of, well, this is the work that the consultants did and they recommended this. Right? The idea that the five of us, as smart as we are, we're not transportation or active transportation experts. So the degree by which we're too prescriptive, may impede their ability to adopt what we're suggesting that they should adopt. And I just wanna be careful again, that I, I'm fine with what we have written. I like what we have written. The point gets across. But I don't think the, the Village Board is gonna take it and plug and play and give it back to us the way exactly we want. And I think the way I understand what we're doing here is we're telling them our concerns, we're expressing what our preference is, as we should during any of these reviews, and then they're gonna give us some feedback back and we'll see where it goes. Is that right?
Yeah, and I don't know what advice consultants have given them. Um, I mean, I just look at all of our roads. There's gotta be a reason why bicycle lanes are, not good on our roads. And probably it's because consultants are not motivated to, um, select, a, um, they wanna tailor them towards the advanced end-users and not tailor them towards average people. But the difference in the village is we have everybody here riding on it. Um, if we take a look at Jefferson Road, um, near sixty-five, um, I don't know who's riding down Jefferson Road there, um, on their bicycle, but mostly pretty advanced cyclists as they get there. You don't have families, um, that live, you know, three hours down that are, trying to get there to go for a bicycle ride. So I think we have a different situation here. So I think we have a different situation here and in the village. And I think it mandates, um, a little more consideration of making them children friendly where. You know, if you're more rural area, I think that's less a concern.
I, I, I agree with you. And I, I do think that the consultants and how they write these things are often wrong in terms of what the residents in the village want. And what the LWRP is suggesting we should get, so yes.
Uh, I mean, what I still think of is the bike lanes around MCC that I go past every day on my way to work. For five years, I believe I've seen one person using them. Everybody else just rides on the sidewalk. So it's a forty five mile an hour road and the bike lanes are just frightening if you're in that kind of environment for the average person.
Yeah. Okay, good. I'm good going to nine point two if you guys are.
Okay, I like how you redid that sentence there. And actual is, I think, two A's.
Okay, and that's the recommendation that Google gives me too. Great.
American Association of something of transportation officials.
Okay. Do I say this twice or does this need, this sentence need to get moved up here? Um, I think this needs to go up.
You can put it.
Foot wide sidewalks.
Wait, put it as the first sentence.
Is this is all bridge related? No, it's not. Oh, oh, shoot. Okay. I just hit the, uh, wrong hot key. One second here, sorry. Let me. Sorry, I just needed one second here.
You're, you're right, though, as you're doing that, that sentence might have been specific to the bridge.
Yeah.
General enough to want to put there first.
And I'm just struggling. Oh, here we go. I just have to. This is really.
Now with a normal applicant, uh, so Justin Litcher, in a normal applicant, we would just simply express our concerns and then they would come back to us. With how they intend to fix it. Whereas here, we're giving some guidance that's a little bit more specific, correct?
Well, yeah, I would agree with that, but usually it's more interactive. If we're in a meeting and someone's showing their addition plans. We'll, you know, ask them questions and be like, you know, someone has a concern or you say, you know, that light. Your backyard looks awfully bright and awfully high. We, can you, uh, lower that so it's less intrusive on your neighbors? And then they, oh, okay, yeah, we can do that. No big deal.
Yeah.
So it's usually more interactive and then we also get the chance to listen to them. If we say, well, we're concerned about this, they say, well, it really needs to be this way for this reason, then we drop our concern. We're not.
Okay, good deal.
So this is different because it's huge and it's not really, we're not doing this in a very interactive setting right now. Uh, because they need to go back and figure out what they want to do. So it's not a quick and easy change.
I, I want to weigh in on this. The interactive part should have come at the very beginning. And, and not at the end, you know, when the, this, uh, ATP is, you know, cast in this. You know, impermeable surface. It should have happened a long time ago, and so I feel like this is a monster retrofit. I think it could have been, but anyway.
And, and we've seen this pattern as well. We get brought in when things are already almost cast in stone.
That's right, that's right, that's right. And, you know, I, I have even a tiny bit of sympathy, you know, for, um. You know, for PCP, um, things were so out of sequence. But, but, you know, when we did two LWRP reviews for them. Um, the findings were, um, this is inconsistent because. And, you know, and I said time and again to, to Chris, the remedy, you know, is in. Read the LWRP, you know, just have a, have a glance at that. So a- anyway, I just feel like we're doing, um.
Yeah.
I, I just, I, this interactive part at, at this, um. At, at this juncture. I just kinda, you know, I always, you know, I kinda question it, but anyway, we're almost done.
Well, when you're coming up with the, go ahead.
Sorry, I'm waving to members of the public.
Well, I mean, I think you need to have a good conversation upfront to figure out what your goals are. And that was the omission is referring, figuring out what some of the goals are in, in here. Accommodating them, but. Whatever.
All right.
I know. Here we are again, you know, wha- whatever, out of sequence.
Yeah, we're doing, we're doing work with wording that should have been done in the committee level. Or potentially at the board level before it got ratified.
Or, or, or just, you know, with the first day that the ATP committee met. It should have, you know, said this will need to re, you know, to be consistent with the LWRP. So glance at it, you know, have, have a read. What are the salient points in the LWRP? And I think it could have been a, you know, terrific, you know, consistent, uh, canal. Uh, cognizant, you know, document.
Yeah, well, well, you say the same thing about the environmental review is thinking of the environmental concerns upfront is key too. Because things like stormwater, uh, impact on stormwater is something no one thinks of. It's like, oh, let's put this sidewalk here. It's like, whoa.
So they.
Right.
So there, there's a consistent pattern of bringing, bringing in the different stakeholders too late in the process to get the results that we want, right? Is, is kind of the, the people who, who are gonna make decisions on this too late.
Yeah.
Well, I, I would, I would tend to think that part of, uh, the differences between some of the boards, the governing boards. Are used to having pretty wide discretion and doing what they want rather than what they're required to do. Whereas we're looking at things, we're looking at, does it comply with requirements? Um, it's, uh, I think it's a very different lens on, on things, um, so.
And so I, and I, and I think, and I think, you know, we've really widened our, our lens here. You know, I would have been happy to say this is inconsistent and these are the, you know, thirty reasons why.
Well, I think as.
Anyway.
Sometimes I, sometimes we look at these things and I, and Justin, you kind of made, alluded to this and I just want to be careful that I'm not. Um, doing something I shouldn't, which is. I would like to see this project, generally speaking, the ATP move forward, right?
Yeah.
I'm commissioned to just simply say, is it consistent with the LWRP? But we together are putting in the extra time through verage like we just did on nine point one. To effectively directly say, do this, and it would be more consistent and you're more likely to get it through. Will we do that for all applicants? I, I don't know. And is that inappropriate to have a different, uh, level of? Time and attention and, and effort to try to get it through? I, I don't know.
I guess, I guess I, my skepticism comes with the, you know, get it through. Like, what are they gonna do with all this work, all these recommendations?
Right, right, so.
Up to, up to them.
Yeah, I, I, right, okay.
So, um, David, your question about do we do this for all applicants? In general, um, we don't design the projects for the applicants. We look at the applicant's project and we'll tell them, look, this is a problem. And then we'll look for them to fix it. Um, this is kind of the situation here. They're asking them to fix it, but we're giving them some recommendations as well. It's a different scenario.
That's not inappropriate, right? Not inappropriate to tell them how to fix it. That's fine. That's something we can do.
Yeah.
Okay, good. Then I'm fine. Let's go to nine point two and fix it.
Okay, all right. Okay. So that is, um, LW, that first paragraph, actually. Both paragraphs are LWRP, section three, page twenty eight. Yeah, both, both paragraphs.
Are they, uh, is it one quote or is it two?
Uh, it's, it's two paragraphs.
Okay, but they're connected there, so I don't need to terminate the quote and.
I would, I, I would close the quote at the end of a paragraph, yeah.
Okay, and then this is a separate paragraph, okay?
Yeah, right.
Okay.
So I think what we had said before is connectivity to the canal needs to be a prime directive of the ATP document, a primary goal.
Right.
That just needs discretion. And then it says, along with access to schools and, um, and community and, and so on. Okay, that's fine.
Yeah.
What's going on here? Why do we have a straight quote?
Was it before policy nine point three, before the P?
Yeah, I don't know why.
Because I think that is a direct quote.
It is, it does. It goes all the way back to the beginning of policy nine point three. But you probably don't need to quote it as such. You could probably just leave it as policy nine point three and then quote it before.
This, right?
Yeah. Technically.
I think all these are directly copied from there.
Yeah.
I, yeah, and I, I think this is kind of, so what do we do up here? Sorry, I'm skipping.
We don't quote it. We don't quote the bolded titles.
Right, right, okay. So I think we don't need to, is, is that okay?
Yeah, so just quotes are, even though it's a direct quote, you can the bold.
Gotcha.
Right, and that's section three twenty nine, page twenty nine.
Okay.
Okay, so we're at policy nine two, our recommendations and nine three are recommendations. So there is some recommendations in the town portion on how to connect Nazareth to Pittsburgh Plaza. I don't remember, they mentioned that there's no good sidewalks on their, on French Road. I think there's some, I think there is mentioning of improving the, um. Um, improving the Auburn Trail as well, so it goes behind whatever, whatever the side of the canal is or by the, behind the golf course. That's the canal, the, um, Monroe Avenue. So there's, there's the Wegman side and then there's the other side, whatever you call the, the other side. North side.
Non-Wegman side.
So I think there may be something in there about that. So, uh, I, I think another thing might be connecting, that's a real, uh, problem with the towns portion. Is connecting adjacent neighborhoods to the Erie Canal Path. That may be less of a concern in the village.
Here.
Yep. Um, I guess where they're lacking, I don't know how you want to word that, um.
Uh, connect adjacent, unconnected. I don't know, um. Something like that.
Yeah, I would, I would say that's fine.
Or disconnected adjacent neighbors.
So basically the thing I, that's kind of bugged me is when you find someone that needs to put their bike in their car to go a quarter mile to the canal. That's the type of thing we don't want.
I agree with you and should we take the recommendation, the second recommendation in nine point three? And move it up to nine point two? Cause there's no. I don't think nine point three applies to, no, the second one, I'm sorry.
Where are we, uh?
Go lower, go lower.
Sorry.
There you go. That whole area there, because nine point three is visual access. I don't think visual access should be, uh, the section where we want to put in, um, the comment, improve access to the canal. What if we dump that up into nine point two, uh, as an open space asset?
Well, wasn't, uh, wasn't the visual access, weren't we gonna talk about the linear park?
It is right above it, right above it, it's mentioned. So you see where he has highlighted, uh, that recommendation, I feel like it's in the wrong section. But the recommendation above it, which is the linear park, I think is correct.
Yeah, I agree with your thought there. So put that highlighted recommendation up in the above section.
Yeah.
Something like that?
And, and I would even go so far as to bullet point out the second sentence of that bullet. So the ATP does not address connectivity of the Erie Canal. Have that be a bullet in and of itself.
Yeah.
Just to draw attention to it. It probably should be with the one before it, but just to make it a little bit more direct, I like it as a separate bullet myself.
It was pretty long.
Yeah. You can do it as a sub-bullet, but I think as its own bullet, it makes you think of it as, uh, more valuable. And if, so this goes back, that bullet is the same as the first bullet.
Yeah.
And.
What if, what if I take, and this is the most important one, right? So what if I move this up to the top?
I think so.
Yeah, I think those two are the most important.
Yeah.
So, and, and those are redundant, right? So just.
And you could even bold that for me and all cap it for me. That would be fine.
I don't have a hot key for all caps, which is probably a good thing. I shouldn't be trusted with that. No caps, no caps, underline, italics. Red. Okay, let's.
And you need to put a little bar dancing guy next to it also.
Put some, uh, fire emojis or something?
Yeah. Blinking, blink tag.
Yeah, when I go to work, I, I keep driving past this plumbing shop on my way to work that has this like guy dressed up in. Some, whatever costume, uh, dancing next to some music on the street corner. Um, I guess they're, they're dressed up as a giant plumber outfit. It was eighty-five degrees outside and someone's dressed up in this big hot outfit. That just, it just seemed really wrong.
Yeah.
All right, I'm gonna go back to ordering for just a second. So nine one is, um, appro- or promote appropriate. Physical public access and recreation throughout coastal area. Nine two is connect important open space assets and then three is visual access. Should we put those bullets in nine one instead of nine two? Which is public access to the recreation coastal area rather than open space? Cause I think nine two is sort of like saying, connect the canal to a park, connect the canal to, um. I don't know. The, the new barn that's gonna go up. I, I just want to be, I want to dump them in the right section. So could we consider putting maybe the bolded bullet? Up on nine one instead?
Or all of those in nine one?
Maybe all of them. I didn't want to go so far as to say that, but that may be true.
Um, below these recommendations here, huh? So kinda.
Yeah, so this is where. As it stands right now, open space assets would not be what I considered to be. as it stands right now, open space assets would not be what I consider to be public access and recreation. Well, geez, I don't know. Maybe it applies to both. I mean, what do you consider public access and recreation to the coastal area versus open space? They're saying open space, Erie Canal, Auburn Trail, Lock 62 Trail. I, I don't really have a problem with the bike paths that are already there and connecting those, and they're working on the Auburn Trail. I guess I'm, I'm more concerned about the roadways getting people to bike down there, and to me, that's public access.
I think, yeah, everything can be under 9.1.
Yeah.
So it specifically states under 9.2 there that the trail system will be expanded to provide these connections. And connecting the trail system to the historic village, surrounding neighborhood, parks, as well as significant open spaces, wide public support, as an important community goal. So I think that's why those are in there, is it specifically says to do that.
Okay.
I, I don't think it matters where it goes, they just need to fix it, so.
Yeah.
Two, I think.
And what I wouldn't want is, I don't want that bolded one to be other. I want it to be like the first thing they see.
Yeah.
Possible.
Ah, right. So, well, we could combine all these together. I mean, it doesn't really make sense to even, do you want to put them all in or not? Well, what's the consensus first, 9.1 or 9.2? And then we can figure out.
I mean, 9.2 has such a good quote that Justin did.
Should we put that quote, should we put these back in 9.2 and then put in that quote? Maybe, is the, the quote about requiring the connections, or is that already there?
That's already there.
That's already there, okay.
Yeah, you could just say recommendation, just to see the recommendations in 9.1 as they're closely related to the recommendations for 9.2. This is additional support for the recommendations in 9.1.
Okay, so see recommendations listed under 9.1 as many are required by this policy. Makes sense.
Right.
Many are, I'd say, consistent with this policy.
Inconsistent?
Are, are, are consistent.
Oh, the recommendations are consistent, right? Yeah.
Yeah, so you stick out like a bolded recommendation or something before it. That I think when going through this, what someone's going to want to see is, they're going to ignore most of this, they're just going to look at wherever they find a bold recommendation and read that.
Yeah, and I would go up to the ones above it and get rid of other specific recommendations. And just have it be part of the recommendations, and either bullet point that big one.
Okay, recommendations, and then, but we actually want this one to be first, right?
Do that one first, right. I think that's the route to take there.
Something like that.
Right. Now, I have a question. Board members will read recommendation number one, they'll look at that and say, well, what are we going to do any different? And move on. Is there anything specific that the ATP should say that they could reference to the LWRP that addresses that in a quick and sufficient manner where they would be willing to adopt it in a fairly expedient way when they sit in there with the town? Or is this something that needs considerable improvement post facto? Where they just say, okay, yeah, we hear you, but we're going to pass it anyway and come back to it later?
Well, what are the worst problems? So I'm thinking of the village, and most of the village neighborhoods are pretty well-connected, but except for the bridges are the biggest problem.
Yes.
And so the neighborhood near Southernland High School, for example, has no connectivity near the, to the canal, really. You can walk across the Monroe Avenue Bridge, but you aren't exactly, you're going to be challenged to ride a bicycle there. Unless you go on the sidewalk that has handrails on both sides, which is not an ideal place to ride a bicycle.
Yep.
You walk it across there.
So we've made comment previously, I don't remember what section, section.
Well, for.
Why don't, why don't just add that southern, that neighborhood that you just said? Say, i.e., you know, the Southernland neighborhood does not, you know, connect safely for bicyclists to the Erie Canal. I think that's pretty specific. I mean, not everything has to be, I think, a fix. You know, let them, but I think we can be specific about the, the, the problems.
Something like that, Susan?
Yeah. Does, does not, does not, it's not, there's not an adequate connection for bicyclists to the Erie Canal.
Yeah, and there's also no connection from the north side of Monroe Avenue to the canal. So the south side of Monroe Avenue, the Wegman side, there's no, there's no sidewalk or bike lane on the south side of Monroe Avenue. And then the north side of Monroe Avenue has no, no path to connect it to the canal. So there's literally no access.
Right, now you get that a whole entire apartment complex that, how would they get on the canal?
North side of Monroe Avenue, is that the?
Yeah, that's what you're saying, north side. I mean, up by French Road, there's a big apartment complex, and where do they cross the road to get onto the canal on the south side? Maybe there's a crosswalk by that light near the manufacturing place. But, I don't know. But again, thinking about the LWRP as a village review, for us, you know, we got to basically focus on the bridge, not necessarily what's, you know, just beyond it. And I really would like for that bridge to be one where I feel inclined to go over it.
So the other end of the bridge is still in the village?
Yes, both sides of the bridge are in the village, that's right.
So, so basically, the problem is that side of the Monroe Avenue Bridge has poor connectivity, so if you're a pedestrian, they want you to go down to the road, was it Wood Street, and then walk backwards to the canal. And there is some little path through the trees that people conveniently take, but that should be paved. And the other side over there has no access by any means. So it's really, really poorly connected to the canal for pedestrians and bicyclists as well.
But I definitely agree that work needs to be done on the bridge to make it accommodative for pedestrian and bike traffic. So whatever we can get them to do and sneak into the ATP would be great.
Yeah, and I would say there's just plain not good connections for, I'd say bicyclists and pedestrians to the canal.
Okay, yep.
Okay, bicyclists and pedestrians.
Yep.
I guess as bicyclists or pedestrians, does not have adequate connections for bicycles or pedestrians.
Yeah. You may, maybe throw a comment, instead of doing and the north side, do a comma. And maybe put somewhere in there about the limited access for human-powered boat transportation too. I don't know if that makes sense to anybody, we talked a little bit about that, but.
If I had a. Might make that a separate point or something, I feel like that's a little.
Yeah, okay, go back to the and. Yeah, okay. But it would be.
It was somewhere elsewhere, wasn't it?
I thought so too.
All right, well, let's keep going if we.
It's in 10, all that.
In 10, okay, thanks. Oh, I think that's good, 9.1, 9.2 refers back.
Okay.
Yeah.
Let's look at 9.3.
9.3 is visual access, the only thing I can think of is that, the park, the linear park.
Right.
Nothing else in the ATP really affects how we see the canal or the waterways.
10?
10, okay, good.
Uh, what are the recommendations, all these? Like that?
What if we, instead of putting, consider human power, what do you just say, ATP does not consider human-powered water transportation?
Yeah.
Where are we, Dave?
First bullet.
First.
So amend the ATP to consider a human-powered water transportation.
Actually, that's a better way to say it, right? Just start with amend, recommendation, amend the ATP to consider, right? Good call.
Yeah, my comment to Renee, Renee says, well, you don't really use canoes for transportation. So we left the daddy here, is it was left out of both this document and the comprehensive plan. So you got to put it in one of them. They, we never got far enough to consider the comprehensive plan with this stuff, so you might as well put it in this document.
Yeah, I feel like we shouldn't be too prescriptive about what people can use for transportation. I don't know if you've seen that video of the guy paddleboarding across the Hudson River to, for a meeting in Manhattan or something, there's a. Leave for creativity here. This ice skating along the canal is kind of a sub-point of human-powered transportation, or is that more of a, this, this could use a little bit of polish here?
Yeah, I think it's Bob Ford Field. I think is what it's called.
King's Bend.
And ice skating along the canal is mentioned in the LWRP, so I think you can just say is mentioned in the LWRP.
Okay.
I'm not going to say whether that's a viable and safe idea.
This, um, yeah, I, I think these recommendations are good.
I'm looking at the ATP just briefly, and they define active transportation as it refers to human-powered mobility, primarily walking and biking. But it doesn't exclude boating. So given that this is an LWRP, I think we should somehow get them to address it.
I know, get the W in there.
Yeah.
How should we polish these up here? Can someone on a canoe get to a restaurant without breaking a sweat? I, this, this might just be sort of a.
You could just say get to a restaurant, period.
Well, okay, I would even just say have, have improved access to, what is policy 9.1 and 9.2, use the words that they use.
Improve access to Port of Pittsburgh for human-powered low-free board craft, watercraft, something like that. So nine, similar to what LWRP says, I think. And then.
You could say Port of Pittsburgh and Shane Place.
Spaces. I would do, I would say, use the words physical public access, recreation, and open space assets, and those were 9.1 and 9.2. And so if you use the words in the titles of 9.1 and 9.2, and you say something to the effect of, provide waterway transportation docking mechanisms to ease access to public recreation coastal area and important open space assets, something like that. Might be a way to encourage a dock down by Shane Place.
I'm not going to be able to, let's see. What are some of the?
Yeah. Provide, provide waterway docking or launch proximity to.
Launch facilities?
Launch facility, sure, to important open space and recreation assets along the coastal area or throughout the coastal area. Recreational areas throughout the coastal area.
Coastal area.
We mentioned that in the third bullet, the fourth bullet, and the fifth bullet.
Maybe drop, so maybe that, the one that we just wrote could be the primary and take all the other ones and do sub bullets.
Yeah, I think that would make sense. So take bullets, three, four, and five, and make them sub-bullets under that.
Yeah.
Under this.
Right.
Yeah, all right, now we're getting fancy here.
And then I would, as number one sub-bullet, I would even put, provide docking facilities at Shane Place.
This one?
I, I think we need to have a docking facility at Shane Place for small boats. It, it's ridiculous that we don't have it, to me.
Well, that's the low-free board craft. Where did that go? Oh, this one. Access. Can, can I move that down?
You're good, you're good, you can, yep, you can totally delete that first one.
Docking at the, is that okay?
Yeah, because right now, the only thing you can do is go over by the library, it's on the opposite side of the water, and for the most part, motorboats tie up there.
I was, I, I did speak with one village resident who does paddleboarding there, and he said that it would be really nice if there is a low-floating dock at the end of the wood dock section, to be able to crawl onto a paddleboard and launch a paddleboard.
Yeah, all of that.
Do you?
Paddleboards, canoes.
Yeah, right, you could also use launching kayak or something. So, could I, could I say something like, consider floating dock at end of wood dock behind library for access for?
Yep.
Well, yeah, there's another thought of how you get your boat there. You could put, you know those little tiny buildings at the end of Plum's Lane? What, where, over next to the library, they're between the library and the canal. It'd be nice, that's all private property, but it'd be nice if there is a good path there and a place to park your car, so you can drop a canoe there. But I guess since it's, since it's private property, that's not going to fly, and they don't want people parking there for the waterfront.
Yeah. I, I think you'd be fine with a launch at like a Bob Ford Field or something, as long as you, when you paddle it in, you can get out.
You can always, it's, it's easy enough to carry a paddleboard or even a kayak down the stairs or something, I would think, too. I mean, I don't know if.
Well, you bring up a good point, because once you're in the boat, there's getting the boat in the water, and then there is leaving the boat there and getting out so that you can go visit a restaurant and, or wherever you want to go.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, that's. I.
We have boat tie-ups for.
You want, yeah, you, you kind of want the village to be the destination, not the launch point. But if you have a launch, as long as it's reasonably accessible, like Bob Ford Field, that's fine. You can take a paddleboard there, paddle in, have lunch, paddle back home.
So I could totally see someone wanting to canoe the entire length of the Erie Canal. And they're going to kind of need lodging and food, so, yeah. Kind of makes sense to consider that.
I think it'd be great, I, so, anyway, and it would be nice if they did it on the, what would be the north side, so maybe put a reference there to the north side. I, I don't know why I say that. No, never mind, never mind. I don't want to favor one or the other.
So the bed and breakfast is on the south side of the canal, and the north side has restaurants.
Well, the south side has restaurants, you just have to walk 100 yards to get there, that's.
And you have to like Greek food.
There's more restaurants on the north side that are Greek than the south side. We're going to have a Mexican restaurant though soon, I'm excited about that.
Where?
Next to the Tequila Ria.
No kidding.
Yeah.
It's becoming a Mexican restaurant.
The kitchen, the guy who owns the Tequila Ria is opening the Mexican place to the right where the kitchen used to be. And he's currently in discussion with the two landlords as to whether or not they can take down a section of a load-bearing wall that currently is shared between the two buildings to have. between the two buildings to have access between a kitchen and the bar.
Um, so let's not forget that he uh um was behind the Panther Pit, number one. And number two, Kelly Klein, remember, Justin, all the problems with?
The problems in the basement for what that bar is now, the Tequila Ria, where it didn't have physical access to the basement, that accommodated the requirements of fire code, I guess.
Right.
So they want people to be able to leave if there's a kitchen fire, I think.
So that guy, uh, just to step back, the guy who's uh running the Tequila Ria was also the Panther Pit guy? Okay, didn't know that.
All right, well, let's, we're trying, let's get this done here. I still have to eat dinner.
But I like ten two, that's good to me. I like the store, the canoes at the barn on Shane Place, that'd be awesome. We, we should have a village run boat club.
I totally agree. I think that's I think that's our breakthrough idea.
Look, I loved Lily's post on Facebook, hey, I got a couple of kayaks, come use them. But it still feels different to me to just be able to go get mine out whenever I want and not feel like I'm stepping on somebody else in any way.
Right.
Bullets there.
I'm sorry, could, um, do you mind if I, I, I think we've already got this tie up space for canoes in, in broader form somewhere else, right? Boat tie ups for canoes, um, and so maybe get rid of this and then um change uh policy uh and as signage um to set aside space for.
To accommodate um human powered boats.
Something like that.
Yeah.
Is that okay?
Yeah, do you like accommodate or set aside?
Doesn't matter, uh, accommodate. I think it's better. Does that sound good?
Yeah, that sounds good. Skip the question.
Two Ms, yep.
Skip the question mark at the end, just put a period.
Yep, thank you.
Next one, I can delete.
Um, yep.
Again, I gotta take a call, it's kind of important.
No, the one there about breaking a sweat, I think you can delete that whole thing.
Yeah, um, where, uh, yeah, this one too, or did I just delete one incorrectly?
New rentals.
Okay, so encourage canoe rentals, maybe? I, I don't know, just change. Kind of like that, and then um uh, okay, can, and then delete this. Okay, um, add, maybe I don't know, can we make that a recommendation too?
Potential use for um the uh canal path barn.
Uh huh, potential um uh, consider storage facility at Canal Path Barn, something, if they ever get money to move it there.
And, and no, the one in Shane Place, the one of the barns that are already in Shane Place.
Okay, yep.
So they have the barn of the town that's been putting in.
Right, yep.
Or not.
Or not, right, so, okay. Um, store your own boat or make a co-op with friends, okay? Small dock at Bob Ford.
We, we already mentioned that above.
Yeah, okay, so get rid of that there. Park and paddle, where does that go? Does that go with something else?
It goes with the Bob Ford uh comment.
Uh, right, so maybe up here.
Parking lot right there.
Park and paddle.
Yeah, I, I right.
Do you wanna say canal past barns at Shane Place, or you just wanna say canal past barns?
Uh, in this one? The last one, barns.
Sure. How cool would it be, though, like, for those barns down there to be recognized as, like, historic, they leave them alone, they put in some nice boating access, like, go grab your boat and throw it in the water type stuff.
Yeah, there's no money in that.
I know that. It'd be really expensive.
Well, there's no money in letting them sit either.
Unless they fall into disrepair, and then you have to take them down.
Well, that one, um, so under policy eleven there, basically things like recommendations of see above.
Um, okay, so recommendation. See above?
Right.
See, see policy ten recommendations.
I don't even, wait, what is a living marine resource? Is that like our fishing?
Fish, right?
Fish, right?
I don't think, yeah, I don't.
I, I don't think this applies all that much.
I don't either. I think this is an enemy, yeah.
Delete.
So, well, it says eleven point two, it says boat tie ups are needed.
Oh, right.
This is a duplication of, of above, so there's a lot of redundancy in this document.
Yeah, and that's sustainable, too. It says promote sustainable use of living. We don't have, we're not overfishing the canal right now, so.
No, I think it applies to the animal habitat, right?
Yeah. Personally.
Fishing boat tie ups?
We have some kids in the neighborhood who like fishing down there.
You can say under there, it says policy eleven point two, boat tie ups are needed, but these are more specific in section ten point two.
Um, yeah, but these uh policies, I, I don't even know if we um need to, should I just delete this entirely and not?
I think so. Sustainability, it's not saying foster fishing, it's saying
Okay.
You know, make sure it's sustainable.
Yeah, this is not something we need to be very concerned about, cuz it's a duplicate, yeah, above.
Right.
Yeah, we don't want people in the village to avoid eating too many canal.
Right. All right, not, all of eleven can be skipped, twelve can be skipped.
Can't you, can you eat any fish from the canal, or did they say don't eat any? I mean, so you could only eat two a day or something? Or not even.
I'm, I'm not eating, I'm period.
Justin's having for dinner carpicots earlier today.
We've got her freezer full of them.
All right, so twelve is the non-existent, thirteen. Let's see. That's pretty much non-existent, but section four, page twenty four.
No, up to page twenty four.
Uh, section four up to page.
You can just maybe put a recommendation or something like other recommendations. And then, and then put those two things underneath it, maybe even copy um those things on pages twenty three, twenty four. So what, what that was is, I believe, is a big bulleted list of future considerations, like adding a path along the south side of the canal, adding um, boat launches, there's, I think there's a whole pile of things that they wanted people to consider. So you might even, so that, where it says there, section four, pages twenty three, twenty four, and many ideas. You can almost copy and paste it in there, so that it's front and center.
So, um, if you look at section four, page twenty three, number four, that is, that is improvement of the North Main Street Bridge.
Yep.
Yeah.
I don't have the LWRP up in my windows here, so I can't easily copy and paste it. Um, I, I might be able to get it here if I just.
Or want me to read it, or?
You want me to, you want me to email it to you?
I've got, let me see, I was using another computer to find the um if anybody's got the text they can copy out, uh, you could just put in the chat window, oh, I've got the LW, okay, I've got the LWRP open now. Um, what's, what's part of the text I'm looking for?
Ninety four of one eighty.
Section four, page twenty three, number four.
Yep, or the whole list.
Section four.
A lot of that is town.
That's townwide, but it.
That's still in this document, in the ATP document.
It's funny, they put a, the bridge, the North Main Street Bridge is mentioned in townwide circulation links.
Yep.
Oh, yeah, so you're talking about number four here and number, which one? Which ones are, should I just copy? Uh, let's see. Okay, so are you talking about one, two, three?
Nope, I'm just talking about.
Just four?
Yeah.
I was talking about adding one through eight, and then the next section, one through six.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's why I'm.
It's kind of, well, we've already said once, but.
Okay, um, should we be bold and just?
Put it, put it on.
Yeah.
Okay, other recommendations. Um, so we can say LWRP recommendations uh are relevant.
I think you already said this below.
Okay, I'm just gonna, my formatting is very broken here after the copy paste. Um, just gonna take me a minute here. What I've really gotta do is just, okay. This is what happens when you try to use a PDF as a source document.
At least it didn't catch the carriage returns in there, it was smart enough to remove those.
Yeah, it could have been worse.
When I copy and paste in the Word, it always sticks returns in there, so you gotta delete them all.
Yeah.
Now, that's something, um, that's kind of interesting that Susan, you mentioned number four in that link, but number seven's sort of an interesting idea, too.
Oh, they're all good, I, I.
Yeah.
They're all good.
Is this a creation? Okay, so this is.
That's number eight.
That is number eight, that is really number eight, okay. Okay, and then, um.
Need another space, just to make it consistent.
Yep.
Seven and eight.
Or get rid of all the spaces, huh?
Or get, or clear all the formatting, I don't know. Well, those actually are a bunch of.
Yeah. There are several extra spaces here still. We're getting there.
You went the wrong, you, you went the long route of deleting the other eight, I was thinking you were just gonna delete the one, or add one.
Okay, let me see, so then, and then these, we wanna keep as well, right, as a separate list. Okay, so this is what we're left with. And we should just cite our source.
Yeah, I think we cited it down below there, it said section four, pages twenty three, twenty four.
Right.
And um, did we cite section five, page thirteen anywhere?
Hang on one sec, so this is section four, page three.
You, you just deleted one that we didn't.
I deleted the one that we wanted, okay.
So you can copy that above these lists.
Yep. This one, right?
Nope, wrong one.
Oh, geez, thanks.
You're doing great, Justin.
This is uh walking and chewing gum at the same time, trying to.
The other one was um, section four up to page twenty three, I believe, had lots of recommendations for specific regions.
Or, I'm sorry, where? Where did you want me to add that? So we've got other recommendations, and then we've got from the, okay, so.
So that one.
This is actually.
That one that you have right there.
And then this is, um.
In this valid quotation, I don't know if you wanna.
If we wanna indicate this is a quotation somehow? You mean?
Yeah.
Okay, um, yeah, I'm not sure what the best way to do that is, cuz I can't really just put quotation marks around it.
If you indent enough.
Italize or?
Yeah, that might be good.
That's good. Good.
Like that, or something? And then this is also part of the quote, so italicize this, maybe? Okay, how am I doing?
Yep, so, and then you have other, we have other recommendations and other notes there.
Oh, other uh recommendations, should we say? Is that better? I can't, uh.
Yeah, so then there's section four up to page twenty four. There's two of them, you deleted that other one. So, section four, pages one to twenty four, has lots of locate, of area specific recommendations.
One to twenty four, okay. Many like that? And then, um, okay, thanks.
So you might just wanna say LWRP section four, page one, four.
You're right. Okay, and then other recommendations, is that still?
Maybe instead of doing that, maybe put a bullet in front of all of these. We already said, this is already another recommendation.
Other, other recommendations? So just leave it like this, kind of, since they're all. Um, or, or you mean make this a bullet as well?
Yeah, I don't know.
Kind of like numbered to bullets, it's kinda weird.
Yeah.
Finally. Recommendations, I don't know.
Um, just like maybe other key sections, other key sections to note.
Other sections.
Oh, noteworthy sections.
There. That's the end of the document.
Anyone have any wording changes? I think I'm tired of this, and I wanna eat dinner.
Um, can't we just add section five, something from section five?
Yep, you can do that.
Section five, page fourteen, under transit.
Okay, um, yeah, let me just get down to that in the PDF, section five, okay? Page fourteen, so down towards the, look at thirteen. Okay, under transit, yep.
But just that paragraph.
That whole paragraph, okay.
Like, that's the most visionary thing in the whole document.
And you can leave that as a bullet, maybe. Section five, page fourteen.
It's kind of a longer one, should we italicize it or something?
Yeah, well, move that along, above that. Yeah, we'll move that along, above that and put it with the bulleted list.
Oh, yeah, yeah, okay.
So Justin, if you say other noteworthy LWRP section, then you can. Take the LWRP out.
What's that?
Yeah.
What do you think? That's better. Actually, this is, um, I don't, I can just quote, use quotation marks there, huh? It's not a multi-line thing.
Right.
This is not really a public restroom, it's a shame place, it doesn't really. We just pretend that's an LWRP.
I personally would take it out. Cause it doesn't have anything to do with getting somewhere.
It's a great recommendation.
I don't disagree. But it doesn't, it doesn't have anything to do with like getting places or.
Right. It has train safety.
Right, I mean, the amenities we provide, once you get there, that's a whole nother matter, I don't.
We get many, we get many fewer places if our kids don't have a place to go to the bathroom.
Yeah, you, you could argue that with public transportation, you'd have more people come in here, but then they wouldn't necessarily uh, buy stuff. At restaurant.
Yeah, I don't know where it would really fit. I, I think it is a.
It would be under nine one.
Okay, physical public access and recreation, um, okay, so.
You.
Add restroom facilities.
To accommodate long distance or longer distance active transportation, you know, pedestrian, you know. I don't know, to accommodate.
Well, well, you can't keep the locals out.
So actually, we were, when we went on.
I'm trying to tie it to the ATP and the way to do that is that you need it. Because people may be coming in from far, long distances.
Well, even, so when we went to watch the fireworks on, uh, what was it, yesterday or a couple of days ago? Um, we actually brought a car down to the library parking lot, so that if our kids had to go to the bathroom, we'd be able to get them out of there quickly.
Ah.
So. It's ridiculous, but.
Yeah, well, I, I think, just put it in there and just say to accommodate um. Pedestrians and bicyclists.
Recreational use of the canal facilities.
There you go. Is that a double entendre, facilities?
Oh, of the canal area, something like that. Facility, lots of facilities, we need more facilities for the facilities. Yeah, it was ridiculous. I was like, I can't believe we're bringing our car down here for being two blocks away, but we've got like five kids and one of them's gonna have to go to the bathroom.
Yeah. Yeah.
Well, I think this is good work, guys.
Yeah.
And uh, take some of it and plug and play.
And Justin, I think you've got the link to this and I shared this document with, um, I sent the link, I think, to the, the trustees as well.
Yeah, so um, what do we, I guess the next thing is to, um, I guess we can vote to adopt these recommendations and send them to the trustees and ATP, is that fair? Do we want to um, take the additional step of removing the non-applicable policies? Or just not worry about it?
I'm okay keeping them in, actually. I think it's for the trustees.
Um, what about 14 and 15?
Oh, that was right, the way that um. Okay, I think we deal with 14 and 15 personally when we actually move to vote on it, rather than to move to adopt these as recommendations. This isn't the LWRP review itself, is it? Or are you suggesting that it is?
Um, I think we'll adopt a resolution um, of, at some point. So this is a document. So I think we need, per what Susan said earlier, I think we need to um, put this in resolution form and renumber some of these to match what the code says for one to 15. But uh, for now, we can adopt this as LWRP recommendations to send to the trustees.
Yep, because there, the checklist does not, does not refer to policies.
Right.
So we have a little.
Order, yeah, they're out of order, it's all messed up a little bit, so. But, but I don't, I don't consider this document to be the LWRP review. I, this is a recommendation, a list of recommendations with enough policy references that the trustees can look at it. And then come back to us with something that then we, at that point, would move forward with the LWRP one through 15, Susan, to your point.
Yeah, this is not a decision, this is a recommendation, so a decision is approved, denied.
Right.
Yeah, and what we're hoping is they read this, they see that we're very specific, it isn't the actual LWRP itself. They see it, they give us feedback, and then we do an LWRP review with one through 15, that would take these items and plug and play it a little bit better.
And if they don't make any changes?
Then we take a lot of this, we cut and paste.
Okay, so I, I think this is the right approach to send them our recommendations, our observations, let them respond. That's what we would typically do for an applicant. Um, so I'll make a motion to adopt this document of recommendations. And send it to the Board of Trustees.
A second.
Hey, how do you vote?
Aye.
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 With the record show, there was all five members of the planning board voted to adopt this and send it to the trustees. And I guess another note for the record is that this is not our final determination for the LWRP review, this was our initial recommendations. And we're waiting, um, I guess we can just consider the applicant, we can, it consider it incomplete until we get a response. All right, let's not go there yet, I think is what you're thinking.
I wouldn't consider, I. Yeah, let's not go there yet.
Agreed.
Okay. Motion to close the meeting?
Um, do you have to say something about keeping the public meeting open or not?
Oh, yes, we do, we need to agree on the next meeting. Are we gonna meet next week?
What were the Monday?
Memorial Day, I believe.
Awesome.
Um, you wanna skip a week? And only meet if we get a response from the trustees beforehand?
So then our next meeting will be September 8th.
Tuesday.
First day of school, isn't it? Uh, is it the first day of school?
Do we want to go three weeks?
Oh, wait a minute, so next Monday is the 31st of August, so that is not Memorial Day.
Correct.
Okay.
Labor Day.
Well, what would we do?
Um, we may open the meeting and close the meeting and figure out what's going, um, if we don't have anything going on, we may discuss a joint meeting with the trustees, we may. Figure out what's going on with the consultant and if he's getting us documents. I think we should just schedule one for next Monday and it may be a five-minute meeting.
Okay.
Sure.
Everyone okay with that?
Yep.
Yep.
Okay, so we'll, I'll make a motion to keep the public hearing open and we'll continue discussion at a special meeting on Monday, August 31st at 6:00 PM.
Okay, oh, second.
Hi.
Aye.
Okay, let the record show, there was unanimous agreement among all five planning board members, and it'll make a motion to adjourn our meeting.
Second.
Okay.
Okay, how do you vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, so record show unanimous consent to close the meeting and both our um, last two motions were seconded by Joanne Shannon.
Well, now the last one was Justin.
Oh, did I get in there? Alright. Justin gets credit for seconding, closing the meeting.
Thank you, everybody.
Alright, have a good week.
Thank you, everybody, have a good night.
Yeah.
You too.